All right, 601. Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I will start by thanking the staff members who took us on that nice tour of the schools. They're all shined up and ready for the kids to come in. And it was nice to see that and hear a little bit more about what goes on in the classrooms and what we have planned for this year. So thank you for the tours around the schools. First on the agenda tonight, we're going to reorganize the school committee. Two of our members couldn't make it here tonight, so we're going to table that until the next possible meeting so we can have everyone here. Later on, we're also going to, we were going to talk about subcommittees. We're going to table that as well until we have the full committee presence so we can all buy in. Otherwise, we're just going to nominate everyone for the most difficult committees. Just leave it like that. Second thing on the agenda is recognition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Canada. So I just want to start off by formally introducing some new members of our LT team. Across the table from me, to my, maybe my far left, Mr. Brian Beck, who's a new junior senior high school principal. Brian comes to us with a depth of knowledge, both as building principals and superintendent, and we're very excited to have Brian on board. So Brian's still in the building, so I had to help Brian table the tour, but he's excited to get going and meet the kids starting next week. We have Mr. Murphy, who's been with the team, so he's in year two, he's a veteran. But to Mr. Murphy's left, to my right, we have Mr. Dr. Balasari, who is our new PPS director. Mike, like Brian, comes to us with a wealth of information, knowledge, experience, so we're lucky to have Mike on this team. We had our, we finished up our retreat today, but our Friday, we're offsite all day on retreat for our LT team, talking about building ourselves up as a working team and what that means, what that takes to be, to have a successful team, but also a success, excuse me, successful school year. And I think that these two members to the team really bring, like I said, a lot of experience, a different lens to look at things, so I'm very excited for what they, what we can do as a group this year. I do also want to recognize not only our building principals, we've had to make a lot of hires this summer, as happens quite frequently, and they've acted very quickly to bring in new people, conduct the interviews oftentimes multiple, multiple days a week throughout the summer. So I want to commend you both for your hard work there, getting our team in place. I also want to commend and really give a shout out to Danielle Graham, who is our business manager, HR assistant. But Danielle, not only does she take on that role, this summer she was, she's basically our custodial supervisor in a lot of ways too, in the sense that she helped me and she did most of this work in making sure that our building was on par with all our inspections, making sure that things aren't snuck with, making sure our building was safe for kids to return next week. So thank you, Danielle. I want to thank Ms. Kradovic to my left, who has been a consistent member of the special ed team the last year. We've had multiple directors, and you've been a consistent, consistent force in keeping that office kind of up and running. And as Mike would tell you, she is a great asset to our district, so thank you. And then also Zach Barrett, who's not here this evening, but Zach is our IT director. He's our one-man IT department. As has mentioned to the committee this evening, Zach has done a fantastic job updating all of our technology. As some of you may know, and some of you with TD land may know, that Windows is phasing out, Windows 11 is phasing out, so we're in the process of updating all of our desktops. We've updated our server. So the whole, the goal, the intent is to make sure that our technology is up and running smoothly for the start of the school year, and Zach's done a fantastic job. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to our custodial team, who again have done a fantastic job, as Tim alluded to, and we watched, we did a tour of both buildings. The classrooms are clean, the floors are waxed, now they're focusing their attention to outdoors, to making sure that everything is landscaped for our return. But with a small team that we have, they do a lot of great work, and I want to commend them for all their efforts this summer in making sure our buildings look clean and are clean and are safe for kids to return. So thank you to all those people, all those groups. This is definitely a joint effort, and I want to commend you all for your hard work.
All right, thank you. I also just want to thank real quickly John Magario, who had to resign from the committee, but I appreciate his time here. It was a tough budget season, and we've been in a lot of committee meetings together, and you know, I'm sad to see him go, but I also, on that same note, I want to thank Maggie Woodward, who's now part of the, part of the team, and she got approved by the Board of Selectmen last week, and we look forward to working with her as well. Anyone that steps up for town committees and boards is an important part of a small town like this, indeed. People like that willing to put in the effort and do the work. So my thanks goes to John for his time when he was here, and for Maggie for her upcoming time on the committee. You guys have anything else? All right. Approval of minutes. So we have two sets of minutes in here that we are approving. I'd like to do them separately because I have a comment on one of them. First one is from Monday, June 16th. It was a regular meeting here in the Kiva. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like a motion to approve the June 16th school committee meetings, meeting minutes, excuse me.
I will second that motion.
All right, any discussion about this one?
Nope.
All right, all in favor of approving those minutes? All right, the second one we are approving is July 1st, 2025. I believe we called that one as a, I don't know if it matters for the town archives or not, but it's written in here as a regular meeting. I believe that was a special meeting.
It was.
We might want to note that. Could I get a motion to approve this, then we can discuss, I have another note on that as well, sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the school committee meeting minutes from July 1st.
Second. All right, discussion. I have one thing, I don't know that it was a unanimous vote. I need to check with the other members of the committee. It was definitely a majority vote, but it wasn't, I don't know that it was unanimous. And that's in section two, right at the end. I just want to double check on that. So if I could take, take some time and just ask, because I know John's not here anymore, Dan's not here, he was also at that meeting. I just want to make sure everyone's votes are recorded correctly, and maybe we can table this approval of minutes till the next meeting, and we can just, just confirm that. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to table that. I think we could, do I have to amend that to table? Where's Ron, we need him. Yeah, so we're going to, why don't we withdraw the motion, we'll just table it till the next time.
So Matt, can you make a motion to withdraw that previous motion to approve the meeting minutes from the special school committee meeting on July 1st?
July 1st. I will second that.
All right, all in favor of withdrawn, all right. So it's withdrawn, I guess that's all you're going to do is withdraw it. And so we will table that till the next meeting. I gotta do a little homework. I've been hanging out with our town historian every so often, so I gotta make sure this stuff's accurate. Don't want to be quoted incorrectly in the archives, so I'll shoot you an email once I reach out to everyone. All right. Next, we have correspondence. Any correspondence, you guys?
No.
All right. Public participation. Public?
Just listening.
All right, moving on then. School committee reports. I actually have something for this, just an update on, and then we can get to your, yours first, mine's a quick one, and then you've got probably more to say. We are still negotiating with the custodians right now. We thought we were there, we have a little more, a couple more things to work out, so as of right now, we don't have anything to bring to the committee to sign yet, but I believe we're setting up a meeting for next week to hopefully hash that out. And that's where we are with that. The teachers are offset, it's just the custodians now that we're working on. Do we have, oh, we have you as a, Matt, your tuition.
Yeah, Matt, that's a separate, oh, okay. I mean, you can just swap it if you like, or you can have this whole business.
Yeah, I think, why don't we, why don't we incorporate that into the school committee reports, Matt? Do you have an update on that?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I just have a little bit. So we've had two or three meetings since we met last as a committee, I think. Most recently, just had one, this last Wednesday, which we had Quabon Regional School District, their superintendent came, spoke with us about what their school district has to offer for a potential tuition agreement. So as of right now, we, there's two school districts who would be interested if that would be something we were looking to do. Quabon and Quabon, East Brookfield and Spencer, they were, they told me right away, they were interested in the superintendent, but the more he spoke with their school committee, he said this isn't the right time for them essentially, because of their opening a new building, doing some stuff. So he said if we were still looking down the line, that he might be interested in something that we want. So our next meeting planned is for Wednesday, September 13th, if I have that right. This is the second Wednesday, I think that's the right date. But we're going to be recapping Quabon's presentation, and I can send that to you guys as well, so you can look at it, and then just having a general discussion about what's next with our timeline, if there's any other information you need. And then we're hoping to be back here, present to the full school board by October's meeting at the latest of what we find.
And those meetings are open to the public?
Open to the public, yep.
No, that's.
Yep. That's all I had, any, you guys have any questions?
Don't know enough about what they said to ask you the questions. Once we see the report.
Yeah, we'll show you, we'll show you everything, yeah. And there'll probably be a little bit of, at the September meeting for us, we can talk more about, you know, the school committee's next steps in that, in the whole process too, and where we go from there, so we'll probably know more after we talk again.
Yeah, I think the big, it was a big thing, we'll be determining whether we need to have a joint meeting at that point.
Correct.
And post that, so. And then you guys, so it's, I like hearing the reports from you, but I think it's good to have the whole.
Yeah, I don't disagree, yep. We could do, definitely work on doing something like that.
All right. Anything else? The financial reports.
All right, so I've attached the financial reports, both from Tyler Tech and also what we do internally. Again, I mentioned this already, but I just want to commend Danielle for, for her work at the end of last year with my work, our work on the budget, but also making sure Tyler was in a better place to start the school year. And I think you can see that very quickly, that, that things are where they should be as far as the budget is concerned. We, we are looking at making sure that line items are accurate, and that if we do need to transfer, that we, we know that well in advance. So again, I just want to commend Danielle for her efforts. We are very much looking at a system this year of monitoring in real time our grant allocations and grant drawdowns to better support our projections for the general budget. So if there are any questions I could entertain, or with Danielle's help, entertain a question about the budget.
I have a question. Do we have any transfers lingering from last year that we need to reconcile?
Everything for last year's been finalized, it's done.
Okay.
We just received notification from Desti today that our end of year report is due end of September, so they just rolled it out today. So that's our next thing, so we're in our end of year report for department change, which is another heavy lift.
Well, you got.
You got about a month and a week.
I don't have any other questions, you guys have any? All right. I said the end of this, because if I look at it and just Google docs, it doesn't, I can't skip back. Superintendent's report.
All right, so I started off, as I typically do, with a list of hires and departures. I've introduced some of those members tonight, but we've hired quite a few people, we still have a few positions open to hire that we're trying to fill before the start of school, and that is our goal, our intent. What I've listed as some of our opening updates are the same things that I identified in my newsletter to families about a week ago. We, like I discussed at many times last year, we are phasing in our advanced manufacturing pathway at the high school. So like I mentioned, every incoming freshman will take a Project Lead the Way course, they will take the IED course as a freshman along with life science. And we've also added two more grades to our Project Lead the Way launch program, which is at the elementary school. So that means that grades two and four along with three and five will now be teaching STEM education in the classroom. My goal, as I mentioned earlier in the tour, is that by end of next year, K through five will have STEM education in a classroom, will have teachers trained to do that in a classroom for all grades. So that means now that Project Lead the Way and STEM education is happening at all levels. We have a middle school program, and now we have a high school program that's been phased in for this, for this coming school year. We are also phasing in what is called Democratic Knowledge Project. This is another 1-8 curriculum that we were awarded at the end of last year. Our DKP is the acronym, but this is the eighth grade service curriculum that is being adopted by many districts around the state. This is a more current way of looking at how government runs in our country and worldwide. So Mr. Tiff is going to be going through that training, I believe, late September, so that will, that will start with fidelity, once he is fully trained and has access to curriculum in the fall. We are entering year two of our Creative Action and Thinking Lab, our CAT Lab. Ms. Channing LeBlanc was the spearhead of this initiative last year, and as you may recall, we did show a few videos from our first grade, our kindergarten, and grade two, I believe. This year, we hope to do more music videos, more introduction to music programming, music writing, and our next step is to phase that in and introduce that concept to our middle and high school students. So Channing has done a lot of this work on her own with our teachers, so we're really excited to have year two under our belts starting this year. And then as far as our professional learning communities, our professional development, we are going into year two with our agreement with NOVAC Education. NOVAC Consulting, they're really at the forefront of UDL, University of Design for Learning. And what we've done over the past year is really built a strong foundation of making sure that our classrooms, our instruction is welcoming, it meets the needs of all of our diverse learners, and that we're giving ample opportunities for kids to be assessed in multiple meetings, multiple modes. So we're excited about this work. This work, this year will focus a little more in detail on what's going on in the classrooms. We'll have some instructional coaching rounds with the members of UDL to really give teachers some, some feedback in real time. So this will be year two of our work with UDL, and this was all funded through grants. So again, a lot of the curriculum that we brought on for our elementary and our high school students has been outside of the local budget. It's been grant funded through either 1-8, Project Lead the Way, ICP, Great, The Nation from the State, so we're very excited about that, and it's less of a burden for our local budget. And then lastly, I've just put a, a graphic for you, for your review, this again, very similar to what I had in the opening day letter to families. Just the, all the upcoming events that we have coming up in the next few days, actually. This week is very busy for us. So we have new teacher orientation, both Wednesday and Thursday, 8:30 to 2:30. We have grade six orientation for all our rising sixth graders, so our kids who are transitioning from the fifth grade, from the elementary school to our high school from nine to 12 on Friday. That is led mostly by student council. They have a, a list of activities set for our kids to really acquaint them with our school building. They'll meet some of their teachers, they'll meet Mr. Beck, they'll see the lockers, they'll see the cafeteria, the gym, but really get a tour of similar detailed parts of the building. Our opening day professional development for our teachers, we have two full days. This is the way it's been for a very long time in our district. We have our opening day convocation on Monday morning from, from eight to around nine, and then most of the work is back building base with principals, our special education director, our IT director, so that we, our intent, our hope is always to get teachers hopping, ready to go, and let the kids come back on Wednesday. And they get almost two full days of PD internally, and they also get time to, to help get their classrooms set up later in the day as well on day two. Our kindergarten open house is on August 26th, which is that Tuesday of the first week at 1 o'clock. We also have our preschool open house on August 28th, which is that Thursday, from 12:15 to 1:15. So again, our preschool doesn't start until after Labor Day, but this is an opportunity for those kids and those families to come in and see the two classrooms, to meet the two teachers again, and kind of see the space for their kids. Same with our kindergarten students, they start on that Wednesday, but this is another opportunity for some of our youngest learners to see our spaces before we start school. So it's a, it's a really exciting day. I know this Wednesday, Mr. Murphy and I will be riding a bus with some of our kindergartners around, around town, because this is a big deal for them, their first ride on the big yellow school bus. So we get a chance to see them with their parents kind of do the, the run, if you will, for our bus routes. And as I mentioned, the first day preschool is on that Tuesday, September 2nd, so the Tuesday after we get back from Labor Day. So a lot going on, but I, but this has been posted on Facebook. I'll probably do one more reminder email for families, just so they know of all the important dates. Today was also the first day of fall sports. We had Feel Lucky, I think, at 2:30 to 4:30 this afternoon, and I believe I saw some students for our JV soccer team as well. So that started as well today. So we're, we're excited, a lot going on, and a lot to be happy about for our kids and our families.
Any questions? All right. The administrators' reports. See, who's first in my stack here?
It's Mr. Beck.
Mr. Beck? All right, Mr. Beck, you get to go, you get to go first.
I, obviously, having just gotten here, I don't even know my way around the school, I haven't had a superintendent in a while, but over the course of the summer, you know, I've had the opportunity to, to meet just a few people, and been spending much of my time interviewing, becoming acquainted with policy, updating the handbook, working with Courtney and Eric Hart on scheduling and scheduling students. I do want to add a little bit of information about new staff. Wanted to let folks know that Richard Rigney had previously served as the athletic director, once again, back on board as our athletic director for this year. And we've added a high school science teacher, Quinn McHugh, will join our faculty as a science teacher. He's a recent graduate of Worcester Polytech, we're a year into degree in biochemistry. Art mentioned when we were on our tour that we have a shared art teacher between the two buildings, Holly Nordbeek, who I've had the opportunity to meet this summer, and she has a degree in art education from the University of Massachusetts, and recently did her practicum, student teaching practicum in Pioneer Valley Regional School District. As Tim mentioned, we have the orientation for sixth grade students, and the daily schedule will be slightly different this year, as the advisory period is being removed from the daily schedule and put into a rotation, and that's been added to the handbook. This will also be a period where students will be working with second step, the new social emotional learning curriculum. And I did also want to share with the committee that I was very pleased to be visited last, past Friday, two, I think it was two Fridays ago. I happened to just be coming back from grabbing lunch over at Hannaford, and there were a number of students in the building, and they introduced themselves to me, there were seven of the eight members of the Student Council Executive Board, and they sat with me in the conference room, and we met for 45 minutes to an hour, and it was great to finally see kids. And I learned a great deal from them about the upcoming school year, and their enthusiasm and pride in the school is definitely contagious, so that was wonderful. That's it for me.
All right. At the elementary school, so I highlighted four kind of major areas of our focus this year. The first one was the continuation of our PBIS program. So PBIS is the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Program, it's evidence-based, tiered frameworks for supporting students' behavior, academic, social, emotional, and mental health, implemented with fidelity and improved social emotional competence, academic success, and school climate. So at MBS, we are all stars. So we teach our students to be safe, to be thoughtful and kind, to be attentive, and to be responsible. We are continuing our incentive Starbucks program through PBIS, and it is not the coffee place. So as to celebrate these positive behaviors, we've teamed up with Brookfield Police Department for cruiser rides to school, we're going to be doing that again. We have a grade school store, which we stock, for prizes for them to go buy with their Starbucks. And we have experiential incentives such as breakfast with me, there's also lunch. We do chair rides to school, so I've pushed kids in wheelie chairs with music playing, so kind of show further into class. We do a lot of things to just make students feel celebrated for their hard work. So we'll be continuing that this year. Also, our DIBELS testing program that we'll be using, so we'll be continuing our work with DIBELS, it's the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. It's a set of procedures and measures for assessing the acquisition of literacy skills. So we use the eighth edition, Mr. Riordan is our new reading specialist, he'll be implementing the new, a new progress monitoring system, and working with general and special education teachers to use the data from the testing to support reading across all classrooms. So the progress monitoring schedule, it'll be ongoing, so students will be targeted if they show low scores in certain areas that DIBELS looks at for reading, for literacy skills. So it's going to be a constant look at this year for us, to make sure kids are where they are and getting the support they need in the classroom. And then interreading is our HMH curriculum for ELA. We're going to be in our second year of that, so last year was our kind of rollout year. Before that, there was a pilot year that they did, but last year was our big jump in year. It's fantastic, so it's structured literacy instructional design centers on literature that spurs knowledge, building connections with streamlined planning, improvement instructional design, and comprehensive standards, coverage, teachers have what they need when they need it. So we have workbooks for our students, we have the online program that our teachers use that coincides with the workbook. So we're very excited about our second year going into, into reading. And last is a new block that we're going to be having at the school this year, it's our WEN block. So it's new, it's going to be, WEN stands for What I Need Now. So every day from 9:45 to 10:15, every class in our school will be in this block. It's dedicated period of time for students to receive targeted support or enrichment based on their individual need. It's a flexible block that allows for differentiated instruction, addressing both academic gaps and fostering student interest. So students at this time can receive C grid delivery, related service delivery, tier two and three academic interventions, targeted small reading math groups. It can be grade wide, so we can mix students who are at similar levels, students who might not have related services, we'll have extension progress, writing workshops, online programming, and then we can also do some of our DIBELS progress monitoring during the staff. We really wanted to focus on keeping students in classrooms, and we saw that we had a lot of service delivery happening while we were pulling students out. So we want to focus on times where our kids are in the classroom with their teachers during curriculum time and not pulled out, so this whole block will allow us to get better at that.
Number three. All right. You guys have any questions?
Mr. Balasari? Thank you. First, before I begin, I'd like to extend my, my thanks and gratitude to the school committee of North Brookfield for allowing me the opportunity to be here and integrate with the new team. My compliments to Superintendent McCormick for ushering the leadership team through a couple of days of learning and connection so that we can calibrate our shared vision, mission, and experiences. I was taken back by the fact that the four of us have nearly 80 years of administrative experience among us, and it was a breath of fresh air. And my thanks to the two Gs, Ms. Graham and Ms. Kradovic, for their support in giving us what we need every single day to, you know, to get our work done. I think Ms. Kradovic is a Jedi master, and I'll talk about that, I'm sure, in the future. I've been, you know, I had a really great start in my ability to connect with students in the ESY program that was taking place right down the hall from our central office. in the ESY program that was taking place right down the hall from our central office and meet face-to-face with staff in the program, but also when I put out a message to staff members who were interested in collaborating and giving me an opportunity to learn from them, to come in and sit with me and tell me about their experiences in North Brookfield, their experiences with their students. And this is a place where staff members know their kids by name, they know their families. That was evident in the first conversations that I had with the first adults who entered my office. These are people who connect and people who care. They don't see their kids as numbers, they see their kids as names and faces, and I think that's really important. I submitted the entitlement grants for the district, Title 1, 2, 4, and then I should have specified in Fund Code 240, that's IDEA, the Special Education Grant, and the Early Childhood Education Grants. We are waiting for the department to get back to us on our grant approvals. I did have to submit some edits to the Title 1, 2, and 4. Those have been submitted. We have until September 30th. I don't see any roadblocks in the use of that funding, and the funding will align with the way that it was used last year. We are required by our Title 1 grant and also by the Department of Education to engage our families in meaningful opportunities to have a say over what's going on in their school district and their kids' classrooms. And not just to meet that requirement, but because it's important, I've set the first meeting for our families for September 23rd, 2025. It'll be at 6:00 PM, and that's going to be held virtually. Not all meetings will be held virtually, but for, you know, when we first get started, we want to take down and remove any barriers to participation for families. And we're really hoping that we can, you know, aside from connecting with families about the programs that we have, using our entitlement grants, we'd also like to form a parent advisory council to give voice to the parents of children with disabilities in the orchestration of parent advisory councils. The parent advisory council is actually supposed to provide advice to the administration and recommendations to the public school committee, and it's my hope that we'll be able to formalize that group as we move forward. I'll be meeting this week with a group of special education administrators that are really close to us, and the objective is to find places where we can share services or resources to meet the needs of our low-incidence population students. And also today, I was invited to be a member of another special education leadership team that's hosted by the CAPS Collaborative. They meet monthly, and I did accept the invitation because in this business, collaboration is a key to success. Doing things alone limits opportunities that you have for your students and for your staff. So the next steps are, you know, as school comes back into session and all of our staff are back, it's my hope that not only in forums where we're doing presentations and meeting with people as we will on opening days, but that I'll have the opportunity to meet with faculty and staff individually, and I'm sure that I'll be hearing more of their voices about how much they, you know, they love their community and connect with their students. The, you know, to get the facilitation of September 23rd's virtual session down, we want to advertise it as widely as we possibly can and certainly welcome committee members and any community organizations, representatives from the community organizations who would like to attend that meeting as well. I'm going to, you know, look to participate in regional collaborations. I call these meetings brainstormer meetings because when, you know, when folks get together and do the same work, sometimes new ideas are formed that are beneficial to the communities that we serve. And then it said there to finalize the edits to the Title 1 grant submission, that's already been done, and as I said earlier, we're waiting to hear back. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And we've been trying to get the parent advisory council really getting some momentum going here. It's something that the town has struggled with, and I feel there's a lot of people in town that are eminently qualified to participate in that and really contribute, and I'm hoping that we have some success, especially with the virtual starting, just to get them in there and see what it's all about, and I wish you the best of luck with that, because it's a very important thing to have the parents involved in this sort of a program and have a voice in what's going on. And I hope we can get that traction and build some momentum of it, is my hope for this year.
Thank you. A key to success is having parent leadership, and so we're working with some individual parents to get them connected and be a voice for other parents. Sometimes with administrators, it's, you know, it seems like, why connect with an administrator when you can connect with another parent who's experiencing the same types of conditions in education that they are for their children? That's a hope.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your presentations. I like this meeting, so this is what the summer's built up to, you know, to find out what's going on. Old business, we had that in here as tuition committee update, but Mr. Grant already did that for us. Policy?
Yes, I have one thing. So for next month, we'll have a facilities update and also an Netflix update.
Okay.
We were asked for an Netflix update last year for this year, so we'll do that monthly as well.
Oh, yeah. I probably should buzz quickly through Mr. Verage's notes here for the technology update, because he's had a busy summer. All student and teacher Chromebooks have been cleaned, wiped, labeled, and added to a spreadsheet and database for tracking purposes. Prototype server has been completed, including setting up new DNS, DHCP server, as well as an updated modern installation of Windows Server 2025, Active Directory. We talked about that last year. Started working on that, so I'm glad that he's through that process. Network attached storage server was also installed in the same machine. SIMS report was completed. They encountered an issue where Alma assigned graduate status to all fifth graders being promoted to sixth grade, which required extensive manual intervention by graduating from high school there. Wow, they'll tell them that.
We did. We told Alma, we didn't tell them.
I would wonder if I got fifth grader diplomas across the desk to sign, you know? New PCs for classrooms have arrived. He's been working, you mentioned that during the tour, he's working on upgrading the operating systems for those. We have a collection of broken or outdated electronics. He's putting a spreadsheet together for that. We saw a pile of those that were from the library. And students have promoted to the next grade level, and Alma are graduated as needed, or sometimes graduated in excess of being needed. In concert with Courtney Earhart and Brian Beck, we have scheduled for the new school year as well as set classes. So he's had a very busy summer with the computers of the school. I'm glad that server's up and going.
Yes. And when we talk about the new PCs, we're not talking about huge new devices, we're talking about a small, little piece that we're putting in. And Zach was able to find, like I said, a workaround that saved us a lot of money with these new devices, so a lot of creativity, a lot of effort on his part to get it done, and we're excited about the UDL.
Next, we have policy.
We do not.
No policies to discuss, but we do have some new business here which affects policies for us and for Valley View. So first thing is the approval of the student handbook. You want to give a, can you give us, for the purposes of our two or three viewers, with the high-level changes?
Sure, yeah. High-level changes, there weren't many. I think there were some name changes, some title changes. It was very minor right now. As we update, if we update policy throughout the year, we'll obviously change those, but the way I explain it is kind of soup to nuts of everything we do in the school as far as policy on discipline, to attendance, to tardiness, to absenteeism. It's kind of outlines all those pieces. It also tells our students or our families where to go to if they have a need around special education, around 504, implementation, IEDPs. So what point person, what director, what principal, or what superintendent are you going to go talk to if you have concerns about this aspect of school life? So Mr. Beck updated his welcome message for the 2025-2026 school year, but I think it's worth noting that there is time dedicated to first place of school to review parts of this with students. And I think the expectation is still that they return a signed copy that acknowledging they've received this, so that if there's any gray area, any questions, that they at least acknowledge they've seen it. Doesn't mean they've memorized it, they know it by heart, but we want to make sure that we give students and families as much access as possible to this document.
And once we approve this, the approved version will be uploaded to the website in case someone wants to get a jump on it. For the record, it's a 91-page student handbook, so I will not be reading it here tonight, but it will be available on the website if you want to go and read it. And I believe there are also policies in there that are outlined on how to object to a policy within the policy handbook.
Yes.
There are, who you would talk to to do that, so. If anyone has some extra time and wants to read the 91 pages, I will not do it here tonight in this meeting. Make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the student handbook.
I will second that motion.
All right. Any discussion about the handbook? All right. Well, all in favor of approving the student handbook? All right. Moving on from that, we have the Valley View handbook. So every year, if this is the first school committee you're tuning into, every year, because Valley View School is in our town and therefore in our district, we as a school committee have to approve their curriculum as part of their accreditation to the state. I get that right?
Yes.
Generally speaking? So they are a private school, but they're in our town, and therefore we sign off on their curriculum. They did have a few changes which they highlighted this year, just kind of tweaking some of their classes. I didn't see anything that jumped out as being of particular interest. They have a pretty diverse curriculum over there, and they just really made a few minor tweaks to what they were teaching.
This is really more like a for our studies. It's dependent on our policy, but it's just kind of outlines, it's what we do in March are equal for our school, for our students, we just kind of look at theirs, and they make changes every year.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Valley View School 2025-2026 curriculum.
I will make a motion that we approve the Valley View Schools 2025-2026 curriculum as presented.
Second.
All right. Any discussion about that? All in favor? All right. Then we had on here subcommittee assignments. So the subcommittees, as it stands right now, are Policy, Curriculum, Building, Grounds and Safety, and Negotiation Subcommittee. Currently, the Negotiation Subcommittee is engaging with the custodians. While we are here, I would like to ask if, and I'll get the two of you's thoughts on it, your thoughts on it as well. Mr. Grant has negotiated before. John Magario was on the committee with me previously for negotiations throughout the spring. I was wondering if I could kind of bring in Mr. Grant, if you guys would be okay with that? Having been through the negotiations once before, if I could just hopefully even close out the custodians, it's good to have two. And then at the next meeting, when we reshuffle the committee, we'll talk about new assignments here.
That's a wonderful idea.
You're good with that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. He did offer to do that. No, no, just drafting it cold on the...
If you've got the answer, jump right in.
All right. I don't think tonight we have anything for executive session. All right. If that is the case, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
I second.
Any discussion about adjournment? All right, all in favor? All right. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.